Um, I said see six o'clock, so like to call this meeting to order pursuant master general law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording will be made of the meeting. If anyone else chooses to record, please let the chair know.
Hey, we have a few people. Oh, we have quite a few people in here.
Okay. First up, um, we have public comment. You here for that, Kathy?
Everybody's been asking about the ice skating. I can give you an update. We had a wonderful weekend of ice skating. The ones were not so great today because people did not edit. And our roping off and our cones, a certain part of the skating area. And the liner and running to stale and the DPW were diligently today to patch everything that they spaces and hopefully the weather's not been this week, but hopefully this week they'll all be taken care of. So I would just ask anybody listening, just pass the word along, please follow our instructions of where we would hate not to have skated. Skated this weekend, had a lot. So we really appreciate it. We appreciate the town affording us the opportunity and the church to be able to do this all done and certainly a shout out to the fire department. Sure we have water that is over for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, we have amended edited minutes.
Chairman, I found a couple of places here. Um, in the minutes, I wanted to either alter or expand what I had said. Um, I don't know if Brooke, have you marked in Brooke where where the edits are?
I said.
Um, on page two, this is all in the zoning enforcement. It was a place where I think the original draft had said, I thought that our zoning regulations were excessive. And I think what I said was they're very long and longer than they should be, but not, not in the sense that they're too restricted. So I, I corrected, I can't find it. Do you know where it is, Brooke? You know?
It's right in the beginning of the site.
It, it is amended and it says he believes that the zoning bylaws are very long and detailed in some ways.
Okay, good. That was the first one. And then the second one was in the long paragraph on page three, I think. Oh, um, there's a sentence about me having talked, myself having talked to Chris Britton. And I put in a, I changed it to say that I recognize that this staff, the zoning enforcement staff had a lot of other duties for building code enforcement in other towns, which is what I think I said. This is about ten lines up from the bottom of page three. Dee Blom mentioned that after discussing with Steve Britton, he realized that the staff tasked with zoning enforcement is quite busy with building enforcement and Lee and other towns. I think those are the changes I made, I think. Yeah. What's that? And so I'll move.
Adam.
Have edited.
I'll second.
What's in here?
Okay. Any further discussion going around the room? Dan? Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Buck Donovan, aye.
Minutes are in the books. They're under here. Um, at six fifteen, we have the special permit hearing for thirty-five limestone road. Gotta wait till that. Start on that. And either master plan?
Yeah, I can.
Take ten minutes?
Uh, I could probably lay there on for ten minutes, but.
Or five and Peggy can do. Okay.
And then I could do that.
Uh, yeah, so, um, we had a meeting I was telling you about last report, upcoming big meeting with three lists of action items, three different subjects. And we managed to get two of them done. Transportation and I can't remember the other one, but.
Economy.
What was it?
Economy.
Okay, economy, yeah. And the third one was open space and recreation. And we had a brief discussion about that, but Kathy Hall, who's a member of the committee, made a motion to table that so that she could have further consideration with her advisory committees, the youth commission and the OSRP committee. And we, we tabled it. And I then attended, a week later, I attended Kathy's meeting here. And they all came to a very distinct, clear conclusion about what they wanted in our open space and recreation plan. And then in a separate vote, they decided what they wanted in the, to submit into the master plan, which was an abbreviation, shortening of that. And so we're having a meeting, I think, next Monday. Uh, and we will have at that meeting, two things. One is the second part of Kathy's output meeting, uh, which is their recommended, what they recommend included in the master plan. And I, I would anticipate, I can't guarantee, but I would anticipate that'll pass with very little discussion because it's, it's very clean. Um, and the second thing is we will be discussing for the first time, the text of the background information. And I've seen pieces of that, I think. I don't know if it's going to be exactly how long, but probably around thirty pages, maybe twenty. Uh, background information about what master plans do, uh, what Lee is like, what the history of Lee is, what the open space, there's a lot of text about open space and recreation parcels, you know, where do we own things? Um, and, uh, I can't remember what else is in there, but there's going to be a, a discussion of that text next Monday night. And it'll be sent to the committee probably later in the week. It's out for editing now. Couple of editors are looking at it. Uh, and so we're still, I'm still hopeful that we can complete our task in February. I think we only have one meeting scheduled in February. And, uh, it may, you know, I don't know, we may need another one, but I hope not. Uh, and so at that point, we will, I will try to convince the committee to schedule a public hearing for, you know, four to six weeks out. And then, so this board will be seeing a product probably after the master plan committee gets to discuss what we heard in a public hearing. It's all uniformly wonderful. Then we will have very little to discuss, but people will probably bring up things that the committee will want to talk about, maybe make changes. So I'm thinking April, back to you all.
Okay.
Be a year and a half.
Are we gonna try to get it on the May?
Um, I, I don't think the town approves it, does it? I think it's just.
Does that happen? Just the board approves it and adopts it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Yosat?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Peg?
Uh, yes.
Community preservation?
Yes. Um, first of all, thank you. Mr. Donovan. And, um, I want to say this, uh, week, we lost a member of the community preservation committee. I think you probably all know. Um, and David was very active. Uh, at the meeting I went to in December, he was involved, uh, conversing and very, very active. And he was just a wonderful young man. And, um, he was a real advocate for, um, the first meeting I went to, he was, I was talking about Parsons March and and when it's, he said he had been there and it was just such a beautiful place. He hoped that more, um, people with handicaps or that are wheelchair bound, uh, that we in Lee could have some of these wonderful places. So I think it's only fitting that, um, I mentioned that, um, on behalf of the entire committee. Um, so thank you for that. And on another object, they met, um, or they're going to meet on March twentieth. And at their last meeting, Construct was present. And I think many of you are familiar with Construct and various towns in Berkshire County. And I believe, um, at that meeting, it'll, there will be a discussion and Kathy's here to always help me, um, at the different things that we have seen so far. And Construct will also be on, I believe, the agenda for May. So though, I don't know the details yet, but those are all wonderful things, I think, that hopefully will be approved. There'll be a baby town meeting. There'll be a regular town meeting. And there, there is also their meeting, which if people have questions, um, they'll be invited to come and ask questions and hopefully get answers. So it won't be so cumbersome at the annual town meeting because, uh, it's quite lengthy, quite involved. And I think the more shortcuts that can be made are good for the community, um, in that way. So, thank you very much. And if I missed anything, I'm really happy to give the floor to Kathy, if you want to. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for your kind words.
You're welcome. Few more minutes, couple more minutes. Okay. Um, anybody out there with, uh, gray lock, you'll see on our agenda, we have a special permit hearing scheduled at six fifteen, and then you guys are going to be right after that. So, um, just sit tight with that. Thank you. Findings ready?
Peter?
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, um, hi. Thirteen, four, aye. Okay.
Thank you.
And it's six fifteen. Away we go. Matt?
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we got some new prints here. I see tree, I see trees, I see, um, proposed trees. Uh, at the south end, I believe it's that south tip.
Correct.
That, that's going to be, it says, uh, additional trees to be planted as needed along some property line to prevent light spillage.
Correct.
Nothing designated there, but there'll be something else going in.
Absolutely. Um, I'm not sure if, is Bill in the audience?
Uh, no, he's not.
Oh, that's interesting. And the reason, the reason I'm not there is because I have COVID. I'm home. Otherwise, I'd be there in person. So I'm very, I'm very glad you guys do a Zoom meeting because it helps me present, um, the additional information. Yeah. So I submitted a whole bunch of additional information. Um, I can go through those briefly, or we can touch on the ones that you have questions about, however you, you'd like to proceed.
Let's go through your additions.
All right. I, I, if you want, I could just go, I'll just go through my cover letter and we can touch base on each little thing, if that's okay. Um, there was a question about the sign. Simple enough. We just included a picture of the sign that Bill has out, um, in East Lee for be safe. It'll be a very similar sign. Um, I don't know the exact sign bylaws, but we will conform to any bylaws for the signs. And I do show a location of the sign on the site plan. It, it's going to be adjacent to limestone road. Um, pretty, pretty typical, I suggest. Um, let me see what else there was. Um, building elevations. Um, I think I saw Dave flipping through those and some others. Yeah. So those show the different types of buildings going to be out there. Two of them are simple storage units, long and skinny with lots of doors. There's the warehouse in the rear, little bit taller with three main doors, and then the office building. One change to the office building, well, we never presented elevations before, so it's all new. But the office building, we're proposing to be two stories. That's also reflected on the updated site plan. Um, and so that's basically a schematic of the office building, um, is what Bill's looking to do. Let's see here. Uh, lighting plan and specifications. So there, I've also included um, a lighting plan with the application. There's, there's the details of the individual fixtures, but then there's a lighting plan. And a full-size copy was supposed to be delivered. I'm just not sure if it was. Um, it's gonna, it's, it might be that one in your hand. Yes, right there. Thank you. Not, not quite full size, but, um, I think it's the antenna cross and we can, of course, provide full size. Henry's Electric was, um, was helpful and reached out to a lighting design company, basically took that design, overlaid it with the requirements. And I know the numbers are small and it's probably difficult to read, at least it is for me. Um, but what it shows is there's, there's not more than, I think it's zero point one book candles at the property line, um, from the proposed fixtures around the parking lot and on the building. Um, and along with, along with that plan is the details on the fixtures themselves. I think I saw some people flipping through those, a variety of LED fixtures. Uh, let's see. And then finally, updated site plans, few revisions on the site plans. As I mentioned, the office building is two stories and now proposed to be sixty by forty. That's the smaller building on the right-hand side, adjacent to the new driveway coming in. I see Ms. Byron looking at it, I think, or on the right-hand side. Um, there is a dumpster location shown, although Bill might choose to move that a little bit. Um, we specified the larger trees that were shown on the west edge, uh, size and species. And then along the line of the comment you mentioned, Buck, about the southern end. So as I went back and actually looked at some photos, there are trees on the southern end, but I think as Gordon Bailey pointed out, they're tall and mature without a whole lot of understory. Um, they, you know, the tops of the trees look great. The bottoms just look like a trunk. So they don't really provide a whole lot of light blocking. But Bill is, Bill is, I think he told the board at the last meeting, he's told me that he's committed to making sure there's no light spillage, um, primarily to the south. And I'm just trying to see if there's anything else. I believe that was all the additional information. And I'm not sure where Bill is right now. He planned on attending. He knew about the time. Maybe he's out on a call. I'm not sure.
Possible.
I texted him, I haven't heard back. Is there any other questions or information that I can provide to the board?
I'm a little concerned about the wall packs they chose in this submittal, but, um,
What?
Uh, yeah, but look at the style of them.
Like the old style?
Yes.
I think it was, wasn't some way putting, uh, understaffed lighting somewhere.
Yeah.
Just shoot straight down. Wall packs usually.
Go out.
Take well.
Yeah.
Only in the wall packs going to be on a building that's, you know, the house is five hundred, five hundred.
Yeah.
So you really, actually they shade down, just straight out?
Uh, but it's still going to be out also. Well, you know, what you're looking at is, is what you're going to see on the side of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm looking down here.
Yeah, and there's other styles that.
Right.
Go more.
Uh, even with the, uh, lights going to use on the poles, which one?
Well, those are better. Those are much better. Yeah. Um, is there? Trying to figure out, it's up to see. Uh, are there, are there, sure there's light pack locations on the south end of the buildings?
Yeah, on the, the, the bigger sized lighting plan, not sure how easy it is to read. Again, I, I, you were supposed to have a full-size one tonight. It didn't happen, I apologize. Um, yes, each, uh, the south end of each of the three buildings there have a wall pack. But I guess I just want to point out that those themselves are probably two to three, two hundred feet away from, maybe even three hundred feet away from the property line. And then I know there's a concern of the, the house another five hundred feet away. Um,
Would you guys?
Go ahead.
Would you be object to a review after we're, we're done?
No, I, I don't object.
You know, a, a few, a few months, once they are installed, to see the impact?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I know, just to speak again for Bill, um, he's had, uh, questions about the lighting out in East Lee by a, a neighbor at one time.
Um, yeah.
It may, may or may not have come across your desk, I'm not sure, but he went over and knocked on their door and, and fixed it, is what I've been told. So.
Yeah. He did. And that was with, with the old, old style with shields and stuff like that. I, I know they put some shielding out there. Yeah.
So I think I can speak for him, saying he's, he'll, he'll do what's necessary.
What I'm thinking.
He's got a little of his tone, so.
He does. Um, so in case anybody doesn't know, since Dan started the, uh, this, uh, special permit hearing, he is continuing. Peg will not be, will be recusing out of this. So I'll go around the room with any questions now. Dan?
I guess the, the only one question, um, and I kind of ran into this over in central New York once. What are the hours? Have we mentioned hours? Is there going to be any noise, extra noise coming out of there early in the morning? Because I ran into it with a storage facility over in New York where someone started working for, I don't know if it was Amazon or one of them, and they had trucks coming in and out of the storage unit because they were taking shipments in. So I don't know if there's going to be an influx of traffic or noise, uh, with those. So that would be my only, my only question.
You would, I can, I'll do my best to answer, um, on Bill's behalf. Uh, I believe his facilities can be accessed twenty-four hours a day. I mean, it's, um, it's a gated system. You have to have the, the code to even get in there. So you got to be a customer. Um, I mean, I think his office will be a normal kind of nine to five operation of sorts. But as far as the storage units, if someone wants to go in there at two in the morning, they may. Um, relating to the, the question about, you know, maybe it turns into, um, I don't know, I don't want to call it a hub, but you know, Amazon or UPS or whoever uses it, um, I, I don't see that happening. Um, as far as noise goes, I mean, it is directly surrounded by other commercial businesses. Um, there is the one neighbor about five hundred feet away to the south, um, who I think is maybe, I don't know if they're closer to Route one oh two than this facility, but I can't imagine traffic from this facility is going to have the overwhelming noise, uh, concern, is, is my opinion.
Red? Are, are you all set, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, Conrad?
Yeah, we, have we heard anything back from Concom on that, uh, result?
So, interesting you should mention that. I was supposed to meet them last week. They didn't have a quorum, so they canceled. I'm going to meet them next week. I believe it's next, uh, first week of February, whatever it may be.
Like all the other issues we raised last time, you pretty much trust, you got your building elevations, you got your lighting details. The photometrics are fairly benign. I mean, some areas, it looks like it might be rather light, just light, not sufficient light, but that's, that's fine. The pole height, I believe, is twenty feet. Is that what I read?
Uh, you may know better than me. I'm gonna have to double check real quick. Uh.
Photometric.
That I trust, uh, I'm looking myself right now. I thought it would be on that plan. Um, if you found twenty feet, I trust your, your eyes.
It looked like the, uh, the pole heights were twenty foot, or the mounting height was twenty feet and the wall packs were at ten feet.
Yes, I see that now as I'm looking at the plan. Correct. Good, good catch.
Oh, I mean, that's, that's, uh, that's shown. Drainage, we know is all good. The building, that's been adjusted now. We know it's twenty-four square foot on a footprint, two-story high, so that's fine. Um, was there any other comments from any other boards that we know, other than Concom? As far as I'm concerned, this is, it meets everything that the, uh, the code requires. Uh, I'm not sure if Gordon's going to be on here, if he had any.
He's here.
He has any comments, we got him on the lighting as we go, but. That's all.
Yosat? Um, skip over me. Um, Dave?
No, I think we've, uh, met, addressed, and Matt and Bill have addressed all of the issues that we brought up. Uh, I have, uh, you know, no more questions.
Peter?
Um, Matt, uh, you're going to be planting trees, um, and you, I think you said they're going to be evergreen trees.
Along the western edge.
Yeah. Um, do you have a species in mind?
Um, no. Um, you know, I, well, he probably, I, I'd suggest we avoid pines in my, I'm not an arborist, but in my opinion, those are notorious for getting too big and falling over and causing problems. Um.
That's exactly, that's exactly why I was asking. But the spacing on it, um, trees will grow up tall and skinny if you put them too close together. And they'll be nice and wide and shrubby and block the view if you put them pretty far apart, but they'll be, when they're young, there'll be spaces between them. So what, how are you going to find a compromise in that area? Do you know the spacing?
So it's not dimensioned, but if I had to do an estimate looking at my plan, I think they're about twenty-five foot on center.
Um, that should, that should be fine.
I say that seems like a decent space, in my opinion. Yeah.
I have some questions about the lighting. I, I, we got, you sent us a lot of stuff and I'm not sure I really figured out what was relevant to this case. Um, some of it looked like it was just specifications from the manufacturing company. Um, are you going to be putting shields, side shields on the posts, on the, uh, twenty-foot post lights?
So this design was forwarded to me via Henry's Electric, who had, um, trying to figure out which lighting company was involved. Reflex Lighting is a.
Lumar.
Yeah, but on, on the plant, the site plan that shows it, it's done by Reflex Lighting, who I suspect is like a lighting designer. And then they specified that, those different, the brand that you just mentioned. Um, all the information I've seen is this does not include any shields. Not to say that they can't be added, but the lighting pattern that you see is just kind of a, I'll call it straight out of the box, light.
Okay. So let me, let me ask you, do you have the materials that, that we have here?
Yeah, I have, I have the PDF copy I'm looking at, so I'm doing my best to follow along.
Page two of Lumar.
Yes.
And there's some stuff that's highlighted in brown. Should we take it that that's what's going to be installed, or is the brown means something else?
Uh, I believe that's exactly what you said. If it's highlighted, this is what was sent to me. So if it's. Uh, I believe that's exactly what you said, if it's highlighted, this is what was sent to me, so if it's highlighted, I would just make the same assumption. And as I say that, I see a note there about side shield. I'm not sure if you caught that same highlight on that page.
Yeah.
So, maybe I misspoke saying there's no shields. Um, I never had the opportunity to review this with anyone, this was just sent to me, um, as this was the design, so.
It's not, it's not that important, I think, you know, it's like your lighting level map shows that everything is fine, I just.
Okay.
Wondering whether the brown meant anything. Um, and I think we talked last time with you, Matt, about activated lights, motion activation?
As being, as being an option.
Yeah, have you decided on that or not to do that?
Um, I personally haven't he- heard anything more back, I wish Bill was here to answer. Uh, I feel like he was, um, open to the suggestion. I think this lighting plan shows all the lights on is, is probably, what the lighting plan represents all lights on, kinda worst, I'll call it worst-case scenario for light, lighting.
Right.
Um, as far as motion activation on certain lights, I just, I, I can't speak to that, I can't say yes or no. Um, I feel like it's a good option and, and I don't, and I don't see any harm in it.
Um, if we, if we do what the chairman suggests and we take a look at it in a couple of months, I think we could maybe return to that option then.
Sure.
If ne- if necessary, I mean, if everybody's happy, we don't need anything, but if there are complaints, a way to improve things.
I, I guess my thought would be, which I, I, I think that's a fine idea, I think that, my thought would be, you actually have to make that a condition as part of the special permit, so it doesn't get missed. Um, if you just talk about it and no one follows up on it, then it doesn't really do much, but if you make it a condition in the special permit, such as applicant must return to the planning board and I don't know if you put a timeframe on it, if it's three months, he might not even have a building up in three months. Um, or, or he might. Um, I don't think he'll have all four of them, um, but he might get started pretty soon.
Probably on, on acceptance of the final occupancy permit. Is, I think when the timeline would start, something like that.
And just keep in mind, there's four separate buildings, he might phase these out, so I just wanna make sure everyone.
Yeah.
Sees that.
In a year, ask them to go back in a year.
Yep.
Not have to worry about looking at what's happening in the interim.
Okay.
In a, in a year, we could be a hundred percent done in a year, or in a year we could have one building, whatever it may be.
We'll miss you so much, we'll wanna see you anyway.
No. I can be there Wednesday. I can be there Wednesday if you let me.
Matt, um, in all honesty, how much of the other businesses are gonna be out here?
I'm not sure what you mean, but, um, sorry, Buck.
The, the containers and everything?
I mean, you, you, we, you obviously can see there's a large area to the south to be gravel.
Yep.
It wouldn't be, uh, I wouldn't be shocked if, if Bill puts some containers down there, his, um, his dumpsters or his boxes.
Yes, okay.
I mean, I, I, I'm not saying he's gonna, but he's got a lot of stuff.
Oh yeah, definitely. Um, but the, there'll be, hmm, the wrecker business is not coming here, correct?
No, no, not well. Again, I wish Bill was there, but no, he's made no indication of that.
I do too.
He, he's, he's kinda, he's kinda hinted that, he's like, I'm, this will be an office for when I'm ready to retire.
I think that's what, that's the impression I'm getting and, and I understand just what he's up to here, here, I think. You know, RW's is gonna stay there, uh, B-Safe will be here, um, and it, it's a great fit, I, I like it. Um, I think, I think the revisiting in one year, um, or everything would be a real wise choice, um, how about a, any landscape or anything out on the roadside, are you guys thinking? I, I don't really see much of a.
No, I, I don't show any new landscaping along the road, um, I mean, there's a chain link fence going around the perimeter, but I don't count that as landscaping by any means.
Industrial park, I don't think there's much out there anyway, is there?
Not to the best of my knowledge, a lot of areas, it's just lawn right from the building to the road.
Okay. No, okay. All right, I have nothing more, um. Yeah, do we, um?
Let's plan the motions if, if we can, if you're ready for that.
Wanna do the conditions?
Well, I was thinking first we should clear away any site plan issues.
Let's do that, yes.
Site plan approval first and special permit.
And then findings for the special permit, and then.
Oh.
And then, and then motion to approve with conditions is what I was thinking.
Um, Gordon, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest before you do all that, you ask for any public input, because that may raise other questions for the board members to, um.
Oh, I, I didn't, I've been watching for hands, um.
Well, I, I wasn't gonna comment to the board, I, I didn't want to say anything till the board was done, I didn't think that was appropriate for me to do.
Okay, any, anyone in the uh public have any comments?
No, my hand's still up. Um, is it all right if I go forward with some questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
All right, um, a couple of things, I know they talked about the west side lighting and details are included about trees and all that on the west side, but not on the south. Um, I, I would like to suggest to the board that they consider any kind of, um, because of the description of the woods on the south side, if they would consider trying to get good detail on the caliper and size of trees they're gonna put on the south, and I agree that when you jam trees together, it doesn't work, but I, I know from past issues and other permits, if you draw two parallel lines about twenty feet apart and then you put trees in every other row, about ten feet apart. That way they have, they're close enough together as they bush out, they don't interfere with each other, but yet they create a better shield. If you follow me, just not all in a row, you have two parallel lines with staggered trees, even if they're staggered fifteen feet apart or so in each row, or twenty feet, but yet in the next row you have one ten feet in between, if you follow me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I would really appreciate some kind of dense, um, and I agree, no pines, no white pines, they're terrible. You know, um, and I think they should come back to you for approval of whatever they decide to go with, whether it be, you know, Norway spruces or whatever, cause there's a lot of blights going around, as I'm sure Mr. Putton's aware, that there is a lot of, um, a, a lot of blight going on, so you might wanna check that out first as far as accepting their uh landscape plan on south. Uh, my other comment about lighting, I get it if the lumens are low, and, and I get that that's great. Our problem has always been, yeah, about the shielding of the bulb itself. So if you were to stay on their property, just stay on their property, go to the south side of their property and turn back and look at the buildings, as long as there's no light bulb or, uh, or cover like a, you know, a translucent cover, then that would not be good, because even though we, it's not super bright, you still see all these little starlights in the middle of the woods, which, which is our objection. Uh, we want the bulbs shielded. From, even on their property, as long as you're, you know, fifty feet away from the building, no problem. And they make, uh, uh, well, I'd love it if they take, um, uh, the other suggestion and put them in the soffits, that would be great. Cause then they're all downlighting, but if you have even half shielded, but, but the uh translucent white or clear area is exposed, then, then you're gonna see that. From standing, you know, thirty, forty feet to the south. I, I think there, that's different than the lumen, um, study at the boundaries. It's about shielding that light bulb from view to the south, especially, well, I live to the south, so that's my concern, there's no one that lives to the west, and in fact, I'm surprised that they're so concerned about the west, the only people out west is the sportsmen's club. So I'm kinda can, I, I'm surprised that they're giving you great detail on the west and nothing on the south, um, as far as that goes. Um, the other thought is, when you're talking about a revisiting of the lighting, is, you know, you might make a condition where you're going to review their exterior lighting that they choose three months after the certificate of occupancy for each building. Therefore, you can do a site visit in the evening, go onsite and see if the bulbs are actually shielded. Um, I do have a concern, um, uh, about, well, it, it was a great thought that I think Dan brought up, uh, about what if, you know, somebody from like Amazon or somebody starts subbing out some of these smaller building, or the big building. We don't know what's going in the big building uh, with the three overhead doors, um, you know, if all of a sudden, that does become a concern if they're wheeling in there at two AM or three AM, we have our windows open all summer. And right now, we aren't bothered at night by truck traffic, it's exactly right. But you know, between, you know, maybe you could have a condition that between like ten at night and six in the morning, they don't have commercial traffic. Let the residential go in and out to put their stuff in the, you know, put their couch away, not a problem. But it's the commercial level that I think we would be concerned about. Um, I, I don't have any concerns about the fact they wanna store their dumpster business in the south side. Again, as long as it's not strongly illuminated, I don't see any reason why it would be. Um, I mean, you know, that's just kinda, that'd be different, I would like a condition to be considered that there's no junk or accident-related cars to be stored on the site. So that, um, no matter what happens at RW's, that when he moves in there, it doesn't all of a sudden extend into warehousing or storing, you know, wrecked cars anywhere on the site, not just the south. Um, I guess those are my, an hour, with my wife's not here right at the moment, but those are our main concerns about potential conditions and site conditions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon.
Hey Matt, you're showing, uh, on your plan, evergreens, two to three inch caliber. Um, what species is considered evergreen?
Well, I think that was asked earlier and I, I suggested not pines. Um, so I think Bill was thinking spruce or hemlock, um, along those lines, so on a side note, I just got a text from Bill, he said he's on his way, I don't know why he wasn't there at six. Um, so he might be walking through that door in just a couple of minutes, then maybe can answer more questions. Um, regarding more detailed landscaping along the southern edge, I think that's a fine request. Um, I'm, I'm open to suggestions as how you wanna handle that from a permitting aspect. Do you, do you need me to come back to another meeting in a couple of weeks, or, um, can it be submitted prior to, say, any building permits are issued or something along those lines?
I, I think we're gonna have to adjust as well.
I think so, I, you know what, Matt, I, I think, I, I would feel much better if we proceeded with Bill here.
Okay.
Tell you the truth. Um, I ju- I just feel that if we go through and, and we put our conditions on this without, without him having a say, uh, or, or understanding where we're coming from in a conversation, I think we could, we could end up in, just, just, it, it would be good.
Okay.
So, so let's, let's do, do a, to do on this part, um, let's figure out some, uh, a plan for that south tip of property or vegetation. And I think those wall packs on the building could be problematic, if we could relook at those. Um, especially what, from what the neighbors were saying, um, line of sight, looking at, at the light source can be a problem. You, you know what I mean with that?
Yes, I, I understand, I'm just taking some notes, um, so, uh, possibly changing those wall packs to, um, I call them soffit lights, um, something along those lines.
Or a, or a downcast sconce style.
Can I ask you a, a question, kind of a hypothetical, if it was just the three lights on the south end, would that be potentially satisfactory, or you're looking to switch them all out on all the buildings?
I bet that would be satisfactory.
Okay.
Cause there's no, there's really no neighbors that are gonna see them any other direction, are there?
They need to be on all the time, we don't know that, do we?
I'm sorry?
We don't know if Bill wants them on all the time or whether they could be motion activated.
Uh, I don't know, I'm gonna make that a note that I'm taking down right now.
If we, if we put it as a condition to go motion activated, it's really gonna have to be in the planning. Cause that's not something you can do af- after.
Right, right, and I just wanna know what his desire is for these wall packs, what is he expecting to get from them? What is, what benefit does he expect?
I would say security, security lighting.
Or broad light.
Yeah, and so, can that be met by a motion activated light or not?
That'll be a bill question.
Yep.
Okay.
And what about the commercial trucks or in regard to the noise or anything at night?
I think, I think the, uh.
Will there be?
I think the hours that, that Gordon said for commercial, um, commercial business should be restricted, not after ten, not before six.
Well, he would have.
That's not, that's not, nothing for you, Matt, that's just.
Yep, I'm just, I'm just taking down notes too.
Uh, you got, what do you guys think about that?
I'm fine.
I like it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
But I do like it.
Cause it could, especially the, the big building, um. Does Ray Murray get deliveries all night, or what happens with them? Gordon, do you know?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we, we've never been concerned or interrupted by any kind of nighttime uh, deliveries to Ray Murray's, um, if they do, it would be extremely rare and we have not noticed that are had a nighttime concern. Daytime, that's business zone, there's nothing, you know, that, we're realistic too, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Exactly.
So, uh, business is business, it's daytime, um, but our concerns are especially in the nighttime in summer, it's very concerning. Uh, we have enough trouble with the HVAC systems next door and the doctors and, and our line of sight to another business on one oh two. Um, so we just don't wanna see it, another problem arise where we have to come before a board and, and you haven't um, put conditions on, I, I believe Williams is here right now, so I think you're in luck. But I, I do have things to, you know, a comment or two later before you go to your motions, thank you.
Maybe. Uh, so close.
Arm yourself, come on up.
Oh boy. Why don't I want to store a business like? That'd be helpful this first. Thanks for holding.
I think so, set it on top there, we, we have the, the rest of it, Bill. Um, so, really, uh, a concern we've had was there's no tree depictions on the south end.
Well, I don't. I'm afraid of that.
Okay.
So, I don't know if he shows up.
Bring it on, you can, yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I went and looked at that myself and, so, I, I don't want any here, I want cover, you know what I mean, so. Yeah, he does show all these trees here, and there will be trees, so we're gonna take that scrub that's out of there. You know, I'd like to get that out and then plant, you know, some nice, um, I don't know what you would call it, privacy patches or.
Are you talking like evergreen trees or arborvitae type thing?
Well, I'd rather go, I told you at the last meeting, I'd rather stick with like an evergreen, if I could, for, for one thing, they hope they don't lose their leaves in the winter, so it's still, it's still provides a barrier. And then for me, when coming in this direction, leaves are bad for me, that they get in the gutters and then I end up with problems in the units themselves, so, that's why I'd rather go with a, with an evergreen.
I agree. I mean, a, a few, uh, conditions we were talking about, also the, um, the wall packs on the building are more of an out. They, they go out at an angle and we're hoping to have something that was more downcasting.
Absolutely downcasting, so.
Yeah.
Notice, so what was on the, um?
Yeah, those right there.
Uh, well, I guess it's Gertie's building now, but Daley's old building down there. I noticed those, and they shine directly down. And, um, and I told Matt that that's what we wanted to go with, these are the.
Those are the pole, the pole lights.
Well, these, they're similar to what comes off of the building as well, they just shine straight down.
Not, not the other ones that are, not those. That's what.
I almost thought that these were, well, these.
That's the wall packs there.
That's the wall pack, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that these were the ones.
You know, you couldn't mount them, I mean, they're gonna overhang from the building.
They do make them.
They're ten feet high, so who cares, it's fine.
But, but lag them to the wall.
Well, they do make a style like that.
Where's the, uh?
Where's the, uh, this is hard to see.
It is.
Do you have the same?
We do.
We do.
Right here. So the ones that are in the back.
You know, and the, the one space in the south would be, there's three of them, it looks like. I see one there, there and there on those buildings.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, and of course these are shining that way.
That way. So that's not gonna be, all, all neighbors are down this way.
Yeah, well, he's over here.
Right.
And we're gonna be, you know, this is all tree. We're gonna plant some trees here. Guess these wall packs are, so I guess they're designed, after talking to Scott Leepaville about them, that they, they do shine down. They're not, you know, they don't flood out and that's.
Yeah.
I mean, on this one, I can kinda see a little bit better. You don't have it, but the, you know, what they give for your, any spillage of light.
Right, right. But that, that one, you're gonna see the light.
What's that?
That, that wall pack there.
See, if you look at the bottom drawing here, Bill?
Yeah.
But it, it turns the, the head of the light down.
Right. A little bit, you're still gonna be looking at the.
There's enough.
At the acrylic.
Right.
Okay.
Look back at it, you'd be looking around at the light.
So let's maybe find something that, that is.
Well, again, I, I thought of going with this style here because if, again, if you go by down at that building on one oh two, that's what they had done there. They're, they're just.
They're like those?
They're like that, but on a, but on a wall and they just, they just.
That'd be better. That'd be better.
So I mean, that's, that's fine with me. I mean, I, you know, like you said, I mean, we gotta be able to see in there and they have security, but at the same time, I don't wanna, you know, I'm not trying to light up the.
While we're on lighting, do you, do you wanna go with photo activated or what do you think?
Motion.
On a motion? Sorry.
We were gonna look into that and I think if we did look into it, it would be on the ones that are facing toward the neighbors. And rather than do them all. You know, the ones in the back that are, that are shining toward like, um, the Ray Murray or the seat, uh, the TV place. You know, I think we would leave them alone. I think as you come into the gate over here, you know, we might possibly put a couple of those in that area. But that's something we're still looking into with, with Scott is what, what we can and can't do.
Are you worried about security? I guess that's the point.
Well, security is, I gotta have light. So I have to have light.
Was that a twenty-four hour?
Yeah.
Motion detected.
Well, I mean, it can be both because if you have motion, if somebody's in there, it's gonna turn on. E- every one of these poles will have cameras on them. You know, so we're, you know, we're definitely big in the security part of it. You have people just wandering in there and so forth, but they can wander in anyways because there is a gate. They'd have to have a code to get in the gate. So unless they jump the fence, which is, it's a seven foot or eight foot, it's at least a seven foot height fence. Um, yeah, you're right. You never know. But, you know, we're gonna do what we can to keep the honest people honest.
Is it gonna do any commercial running, you know, like the, the big warehouse building?
As far as.
Uh, you know, or up like Amazon or?
Oh, no. What, what that is, is, it's mostly seasonal. So guys with their boats and their things that they play with in the summer. So, yeah, I don't make much money in the, in the summer. But right now they're all, you know, the ones that I have are full. Um, cause you, you're just squeezing things in like puzzles. And, um, you know, people's Mustangs and Corvettes and boats and, you know, all those toys, toys, people's toys. That's, that's basically what all that building is. It's, it's really just to give it, when I started doing that, we did do, we had people coming in renting areas. And then when we found out that we could just do this, it was much, a much better way to go. And we, to be honest with you, I didn't think there was gonna be a need that there is. I mean, there, it's just, um.
More than you anticipated.
It is. It really, it truly is.
Would you be okay with a condition that no commercial, like an Amazon or FedEx?
Well, I don't think I'd have a problem with that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not looking to do that.
Yeah, it does sound like that's where you're going with this.
Yeah. Yeah, because these aren't huge warehouses. Just, you know, it's a sixty by eighty warehouse. It's not a, you know, a monster that, A- Amazon's not gonna be interested in us or, or any of those kinds of guys.
Oh, it's just backup alarms in the middle of the night, you know?
Yeah. No, there's, there shouldn't be any of that business. Uh, the ones that are out here, I mean, you could check with our neighbors and so forth that are out in different places, but they say they're, you know, there are, there is activity in these places during the day. Um, we have some guys that use, um, some of our units. You know, they put their carpentry tools in there and stuff. So they don't have to have them at home and then they come and they get what they need for the day and off they go. You know, so it's kind of active during the day a little bit, but at nighttime, they're really, there shouldn't be any activity other than the guy there plowing.
Not gonna be overflow for, for the, uh, impound lot?
For my impound lot? No, no, it has nothing, one has nothing to do with the other.
Tough.
Oh, no, I, and.
Wouldn't want that either.
Well, that, that's another story for another day, but yeah. Oh, we, that's not gonna be over there.
See, we got pen, and then pending COMCOM, con, con.
Yeah, we have to just go back. They didn't have a, uh, forum there last week, so.
Wanna try this?
Okay, uh, site plan first, then findings, then motions. Then conditions and then final vote. Is that a good way to go?
Yep. Oh, I'll get it.
Yeah.
Let's see here. Went home watching it on TV.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter.
Okay, so I move that the site plan that accompanied this special permit application be, uh, deemed sufficient for filing and approved.
Date and company?
October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three is the date and revised dated January twelfth. I would incorporate that information into my motion.
I'll second. Second. Any further discussion?
We gotta include that it's by plans from SK Design dated.
Okay.
Just gotta make sure, make sure it's right. Okay. So, um, what is the date of the plan that you would like me to refer to? For plans and applications for East Ave Storage located at thirty-five Limestone Road, prepared by SK Design. Uh, plan dated, uh, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, revised dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Right, Matt?
That's correct.
I see.
Thank you. That's my motion. Motion is that it be sufficient for review and then it be approved. With conditions?
Not yet.
Conditions will be on a special permit.
Special permit. And second by Dave Forrest. Further discussion? Hearing none. Go around the room. Dan? Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Site plans approved as submitted. Moving on to special permit.
I move that the use and the proposed structures are in compliance, all provisions and requirements of this chapter and in harmony with its general intent and purpose, but subject to whatever conditions we might impose.
You're a second. And, and that'd be our first, the first finding, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second. Yep. Second. Further discussion? Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Second finding?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that the structures and use are essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location, subject to whatever conditions we might impose. There's a demonstrated need for this kind of use.
I, yeah, we gotta have a little bit of reason with that too, Peter, when you do it.
Okay, so, uh, it's a useful service that is popular with the public and it's well-designed and responsibly run. And, uh, fills, uh, a vacant spot at the, uh,
Yellow.
Industrial, industrial park. Thank you.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Second? I'll second. Dave? Oh, any further? Going around the room. Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Third condition. There's five folks though, if you're wondering.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board find that the structures and use will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood, subject to the conditions we are going to impose. Um, this is, uh, the result of, this finding would be the result of a careful review of the site plan, uh, with regard to the kind of use that it is, the typical amount of burden that it imposes on neighborhoods and neighbors. Um, and, uh, very careful preparation that the applicant has done to anticipate what the effects would be on the character of the neighborhood. Plus his obvious, uh, continuing concern to keep the neighbors happy about such matters as excess lighting. We can also say that the adjacent neighborhood is a combination of health services, warehousing, light industrial. It's pretty much, uh,
It's.
Compatible with the neighborhood. Okay, I propose you to incorporate that also in the motion.
You're a second? I'll second. Dave? Further discussion? None. Going around the room. Dan? Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board find that there will not be undue traffic ingestion or undue impairment to pedestrian safety. Um, this finding would be based upon the relatively light traffic burden that this kind of facility creates. Plus the availability of a road, uh, dedicated to serve these, these properties in the industrial park. And, um, there's, I don't really see any pedestrian safety issues here at all because there's a surrounding fence. And, uh, there'll be lighting on the site so that anybody walking around on the site will be visible to any vehicles. And although it is a commercial or industrial area, there are already established sidewalks in the area, so. There are. There are sidewalks on that road? On there, yeah.
All over.
So the pedestrian, you're gonna have a little pedestrian activity there anyway.
Never seen anybody walk through there.
Exactly. Say they're there.
No, there aren't.
You're a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. You wanna do our fifth one, Peter?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know.
I don't know, or, or would Conrad like to do it?
I think I got two out of four.
I used, barely.
Move that the board find that the structures in use will not overload any public water, drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting public health, safety or general welfare. Uh, I base this finding upon, um, very limited, um, water and sewer demands from the office building and essentially none from the other buildings. And, um, the capa- I understand the capacity of our water and sewage systems is sufficient to handle these requirements, these additional requirements.
You're a second?
Well, there is ample stormwater management in the property too. So that's just another thing. It's not gonna adversely affect the municipal services. Thank you. It's just a thought. I'll be happy to include that in my motion. Maybe not happy, but.
Uh, Matt gonna come see the Board of Public Works on capacity fees?
Yes. Sorry.
You gonna, you gonna come see the Board of Public Works on capacity fees?
Uh, well, as soon as I think Bill's ready to pull a building permit. Is, is that, is that the trigger or do you like, you, would you want us in there in advance? Or how, how would you like to?
Usually we like to see the capacity fees taken care of before the building permits issue, uh, issued, but it's it worked in both directions. So, uh, I guess it's, it was kind of up to Matt, building inspector.
Sure. I mean, I, I would like to think he doesn't issue the building permit until the town has paid its, its fees.
Uh, we have, we've run into, as I say, different occurrences.
We, we have, we got a motion and a second on the floor still.
Yes.
Okay. Second. Yeah, I think so, right?
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the, this motion? Hearing none. Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay, we have done the findings. Now the final, as for the.
Chairman, I, I move that subject to any amendments for conditions that the board want to propose and the board pass, that the special permit be issued, um, as requested.
I'd like to go through some, uh, conditions right now. There shall.
Shouldn't we get a second?
We, yes, let it get a second. I'll second. Okay.
And now we, now we can have all the conditions.
List the conditions. You ready, Brooke? Dagger trees on the south end. And to be submitted.
You wanna do them all at once or?
Yes.
Just a whole bunch?
I'll do a whole bunch. Um, there'll be no commercial hours between ten PM, six AM.
You mean by commercial hours?
Commercial business hours.
Big trucks, so.
Well, I mean, there is an office on site, so the office would be like eight to five.
Yeah.
But he's got, he's got a key to the hotel pad system with the gates.
People would come and go.
That'd be.
He can't control when they come and go.
But that'd be residential, not commercial. That'd be.
Okay, so then, this is a question, my question is, is that right? How is he gonna keep commercial trucks out between ten PM and six AM?
That'd be his, be his rules. Are you okay with that? If, if you have a, um.
There might be an occasional person that's moving in.
People are no problem, residents. We, we just, uh, things change over the years. Okay? What, what sounds good now, it turns into, um, somebody takes your whole warehouse there and is using it for storage and is going in and out of there early, late, all hours. That could be problematic. So maybe just.
What would you?
But we're just saying no, no commercial traffic between ten and six.
It's, it's really the, the traffic that has backup signals, right?
Yeah, yeah, trucks with backup alarm, stuff like that.
Okay, yes.
It's not gonna limit his maintenance. He's gotta go in there and plow in the middle of the night.
That's emergency. Everybody, yeah, that's, that's exempt. I mean, that'd be, that condition okay with you?
It, it shouldn't be a problem.
Um.
Buck, maybe it'd be. Or delivery vehicles during those hours. Would that work better?
That's fine. Yep.
You're gonna want snowplows to go through, right?
Well, that's, that's totally, totally different than.
And they will make noise.
Yeah. Yeah, that's emergency services, basically.
I actually, just, just so you know, Mr. Brunel, I, I actually brought it up because I ran into this with a client from Insectra in New York who had storage facilities. He ran a bulk of them out to an individual who ended up turning it into like an Amazon service. So the trucks going in and out and he didn't make the neighbors very happy.
Gotcha.
No derelict vehicles on site?
Move between ten and six, that's what you want.
Yeah. Realistic condition?
Yeah, you might say, uh, unregistered.
Well, it could be registered.
Yeah, but it's storage. Yeah.
Oh.
I would, yeah. If, if there's.
Is, is the.
I think there is a definition for a derelict vehicle.
Well, something that I would have hold for the DA's office and things like that that I store in other places. That's what I do.
Yeah.
I can do that. Let's do it here.
Yeah.
You know, Buck, you could, you could kinda maybe look at it like a DOT, any truck twenty-six oh one that requires a CDL, this, uh, thing. Maybe that's something you consider non-emergency. So.
Well, I would, with the, with the derelict vehicles or the commercial, are you thinking? I think we covered the commercial part, so that was on, um, a different style of wall pack on the south facing buildings. And cons- Consider motion activation on that end? Yep.
I don't know that I found my glasses, but. Yeah, so you're talking these right here.
Three of them, yep.
Yeah, so facing south, so that's that's fine, so these here, so just so you understand. So these guys here, so there's units in this one back here, I don't care so much. And then these just kind of light up and they're facing obviously that way.
And that's the the different style, that's the pole, but like we said, instead of doing that, that. Doghouse wall pack.
On these three here.
Go with a a down facing.
Okay.
Like you like the the poles will be.
Because I think he's showing it here, but that would that's that's gonna be the entryway to my offices, so that may end up having a different kind of a.
Yeah, probably will.
Anyways, that'll just be specifically for that area.
Those others that are shown in the, they wash out a lot, you know, you're gonna see those shining.
Yeah, no, that's I don't have a problem with that, no, I'll look into that for those for those three for sure. And then these are between the buildings, so they're not gonna be seen anyways.
Yeah, those wouldn't matter.
And then if we were gonna do any of that lighting, I think I would try to do it on these guys because they're the ones that are gonna shine.
Those those are the poles which already have that style light.
But you suggested to go with a a motion.
Oh, yeah, on the.
You know, that would be.
Probably just on the wall packs, that would be shining towards the the neighbors.
Oh, I got you, okay, um, yeah, okay, yeah, that's not a problem.
Well, Buck, if it's a condition. It should be something that he should comply with, not that he should think.
I know, yes, I was trying to.
Wall packs should be either downcast or motion activated.
I'm okay with it, yeah.
And that's on these these facing south. And then when you say facing, what else were you talking about?
South facing.
Yeah, well, that's these.
Both light or should always be downcast, I wouldn't give an either on.
Can't say wall packs, you can't say wall packs, the wall packs are those.
Right, yeah, it's not wall packs, I don't even.
Wall mounted lights.
Those are for the. Whole lights.
Whole lights.
They could work well on the building.
It would.
At 10 foot, 10 foot mile in height, that would work.
See, those are your pole lights, Phil?
Yeah, no, I get that, but what I saw down on that building was.
And I I think I think that's what you want, but that's not what they put in this package.
They were talking these wall packs. Oh, I understand, I understand, because what they're telling me, I'm sorry, I got them mixed up because. When I was originally talking about them, I was talking about these guys.
I think those will work fine.
I saw them down on that. Okay.
What's on the plan is that one. So Conrad, are you saying that you're suggesting that you take one of those. Pole mounted lights and use it on the eve of the building at 10 foot.
Mount it right on the wall at 10 feet high.
That style, there's that style.
These these, they do wall mount. Instead of the pole, they mount them.
But they're downcast.
They're downcast. Oh, they're, yeah, they're the same exact, they're the same as that. They're just shining down.
They're 10 feet instead of 20.
And again, that's that's what I saw, if you, next time you're down on Route 102.
So I would, let's just put on.
That's what I was referring to, wasn't it?
That'd be fine, how would this downcast lighting on the south end of the buildings?
That's fine, I, yeah, it's it's just on these guys here, so let's.
And the only other one I have is. That it is passes all Concom requirements.
Yeah, oh, we will do that.
I know you will, just just to.
Oh, that's fine, you can have it in there.
Anything else?
Okay, did you cover shrubs on the south side?
Yes.
And are we gonna do a planting review at one year?
That, oh, yes, what you want to do one year or three months after?
You know, he doesn't know when his buildings are going up.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, split the difference very soon.
He might have to come back again, he might make two trips then if he's not filled, if he's not done building by. Y 20th. And kind of planting.
That would be really vicious.
Wasn't weren't saying if once each building was done or?
Or or one year after the entire site, the last building has received its occupancy permit?
I I just don't want to have to be responsible for figuring out when the occupancy permit was issued, that's all, but I don't care. Like, just you take it over and do it, what do you think best?
The plantings go, I mean. It can be done.
But what's your what's your timeline to get to be finished with this?
I'm hoping for, you know, next fall. After customers.
One year? Review in one year?
That's my review of the plantings.
Plantings of the plantings in one year.
The plants would would be in sooner than that, obviously.
Yeah.
It is a chance for to hear from the neighbors a year from now about all the stuff they might be concerned about. Whether it's plantings or, you know, insufficiency of the plantings because of light coming through.
That's a side of the area anyways.
Okay. All set?
What are we saying about the plantings on the south side? Are you just saying evergreens or?
Yes.
Two to three inch caliber?
Ever, well, consistent with what the others are, I think.
Staggered trees.
This covered. Staggered, if you. You put two rows in. And stagger them. You'll get instant greening and then as they they have room to room to fill out, yeah.
Oh, that whole south end, I.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So you want to give the motion to pose the conditions that Brooke is about to read to us?
I don't want to go back through all those?
Well, I know what they wound up as.
Okay. How come it's so long? He just did it that quick.
I know.
Motion, second?
I'll second.
Dave seconds, any further discussion? Going around the room, Dan? Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter? Buck Donovan, aye.
amended motion to grant the special permit.
Yes.
Point of order.
Yes, you're right, that was just on the conditions. Now a motion to.
The motion's already pending, it's been amended, the motion's been made and seconded to approve this, subject to the conditions. We've amended it, we've imposed the conditions and now the, I believe the original motion to approve the special permit is now ready to vote unless.
Okay.
Discussion.
The amended.
The amended.
Special.
The amended motion to approve the special permit.
Gotcha, Dan?
Aye.
Conrad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye.
Good, Bill.
Good, Bill. We got it done.
Better late than never.
We got it done, we don't have, we don't have to do this another night. I'm sure, you know, I understand we had conditions in there, I'm sure it's gonna be a good looking site, you you always. About this, too, I'm curious, is, you know, is this gonna extend with the Christmas decorations to you?
Well, that's what I was kind of thinking when you're talking about trees.
I'm really hoping.
She likes Christmas lights?
He doesn't have a choice on that. Stuff, you had to build a building, yes. Yeah, but I I love.
Your daughter's doing the same.
I was gonna say, you see the kids around town, it's like, yep, that's a Brunel right there, you know. Now, looks great.
About the neighbors might appeal this for.
Yeah, what, uh, how many days?
Twenty days. That's true.
Okay, I mean, we've heard we've heard from the closest neighbor, so I don't think.
No, again, we're gonna do a week.
Okay, moving on, we got a minor site plan, Graylock Credit Union. Thank you, Bill. So. This came about because it was noticed that. Holding permit issued, but they had some changes from their original site plan. That warranted coming in and resubmitting. Uh, do we have someone from? Graylock that wants to present, yes, Chrispin, thank you, go ahead.
Um, I think Carlin Campbell, the CEO of PW Campbell, would like to speak first to kind of kick the meeting off for us on our side, and then I will. Speak up onto my parts, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Go ahead. Carlin?
Hold on one second, if he's stepped aside, but if he has, I can pick up.
Okay.
Okay, you know what, I'll just jump in here, he might have had to step aside. So. What you see in front of you is two civil drawings. The sheet titles are C1 and C2. They're done by Mr. Philip Clark, a civil engineer who worked with us on this project. Our client is Graylock Federal Credit Union, we do have representation from Graylock with Jody Rathbun Briggs on the call. And we also have Carlin Campbell, CEO of PW Campbell, and we also have Jason Straley. Who is in the land development department of PW Campbell. Uh, my name is Chrispin Conklin, I'm the design architect on the project and I worked hand in hand with Philip Clark. In regards to creating the site plan that you see in front of you. A little history on the project. We had issued for the building permit on May 22 of 23. And we had received code comments shortly thereafter, and we had issued an AFC number one on 6/26. That was a bulletin for revisions to address the code comments, they were in regards to. The glazing on the building to make sure that it meets the Massachusetts requirements, uh, which is a little bit more stringent than other states. On July 31, we had commenced construction on the property. And on December 7, construction was complete and we do have a certificate of occupancy in hand. Prior to issuing the application for the building permit with the construction documents, including those two sheets in front of you. Uh, Carlin Campbell had walked the site with Matt Colmer with the the from the lead town township. And discussed the site improvements that you see. Um, and also talked about that concrete median and berm that you see there on the right hand side of the site plan. Separating the right away from the drive aisle of the Graylock branch, retail branch. Couple of things I'd also like to note here. Is that on the C1 drawing, you can see that it does label for that concrete berm to be removed and replaced with pavement. The one issue that we do have is that on the C2 drawing, you can see that it still calls out the concrete median that is in error. Uh, that is a background to the drawing that the civil engineer was using, so they have a base plan in their. CAD drawing format that they use, that they draw over top of. And he did not delete that notation. We also believe that within the permit submitting process. We did have an error in regards to which documents we had grabbed and submitted. The initial permit, we looked looked okay, but it looks like the AFC which had to be resubmitted because we had timed out the 30 day clock. Uh, from the initial permit submission, so we had to restart and lose our seat in the review order. And I think at that time we had grabbed the wrong drawing and brought it over, which would have changed the C1 drawing. Now, that was just an error, that was an accident, but the intention all along was always to have the concrete berm removed to open up. The access easement of ingress, egress, and regress from the right away onto the property. One thing we should also note is that we did not receive any notification. About any sort of restrictions in regards to that easement. And Jody, if I'm if I'm misstepping or misspeaking here, you feel free to step in and stop me. But we believe during the purchase of the property from Trusco or whoever the owner was before. Uh, even through the plan submission, the permitting, the the building officials review on site, receiving the CFO. Nobody had mentioned anything about any sort of restricted covenant or restrictions to that right away easement. And that wasn't after the fact that we had received later on. Uh, last week on the 17th, we had a call with Ms. Brook Healy. And she had walked us through what was going on and what and how this. Uh, concrete median is now something that was a restricted element to the site and should be put back into place. But we did hear that the planning board would be willing to listen to our reasoning as to why. That concrete median should be removed and we do believe it should be removed. Our reasoning for it to be removed, yes, sir.
Sorry, can you hear me now? I don't know what was going on. My phone was muted, so, sorry. I just, sorry to interrupt you, Chrispin, just to add to what Chrispin's saying, um. The, just a little bit of background, we were going through schematic design with Graylock. We noticed that curb was in pretty rough shape, so that's kind of the impetus, the starting point behind talking about this. I know Graylock was concerned about, uh, traffic flow in and around the building. Um, it's obviously a one lane drive up lane, not multiple. So coming around that side of the building, if you do that and there's people on the lane, you get stuck there, so. Uh, my reason for meeting him out on site was wanting to introduce myself to him, um, you know, kind of kick off the project, but. Kind of talk through some of those things. Like Chrispin said, we just pulled the wrong drawing, shame on us, but. Thanks just to hear what your thoughts are, if we can answer any questions.
I think we, I feel we came here. Because the original site plan was one way, you took out the the median during construction, got taken out. We have to clean things up and do this, uh, minor site plan submission to get it more accurate to what we have now. Um, that's how I'm looking at it, I personally, I think it's a better, you're what you did is better, looks better down there. Um, we're gonna discuss as a board and see what we can do here, okay?
Understood.
Yes, sir.
All right. On the board, Peter?
Yeah, I I appreciate all of the detail about this map and that map and. But I don't really understand what's happened, I haven't been down there to visit it and I'd like to know. The median is shown, half of it is crosshatched out toward the street and half of it is not crosshatched. Has the median been shortened by 50% or has it been eliminated? So the crosshatched part is gone and the non-crosshatched part is gone. And is this reflect what's built?
No.
So how can we approve this if it's not reflecting what's?
Um, on C1?
Yeah.
The the part that is not crosshatched, is that still in existence?
Sorry, I'm pulling it up right now. C1.
Would it be okay if I share my screen? I have all the documents pulled up here, I just don't know if the board will be able to see me sharing my screen.
Think we'll be able, we're, the system we use here, it's not Zoom. It's it's, we've had issues with it, so unfortunately we can't.
Okay, but just to answer your question, um, simply, uh, on the C1 drawing where it's shaded, it's a little darker. That has been, the concrete has been removed all the way back to that utility pole and ballard. Um, and then the pave, actual asphalt pavement kind of blends in with. Uh, the grades were a little tricky there, so they blend in with the alleyway a lot better now.
Where the utility pole, I don't know what that means.
If you were to look at the site, site plan C1, on the right hand side of the property line, you trace that down. Where that hatching is and you continue, you should see Ballard. where that hatching is and you continue, you should see ballard and then you can call the ballard.
Here, Peter.
Where's the, where's the?
Right here. Utility pole is right there.
Okay, so, so there is a median of some kind south of the utility pole, but not north of the utility pole? Is that, is that right?
Yes, it's more south of the ballard, furthest north on that plan, north of the utility pole. There is still the median. North of that ballard, a couple of feet past the ballard, north, there's no median. That's all asphalt pavement.
It's all been removed.
So the, I think we agree that the crosshatch part has been removed. What I'm not clear on is whether any part of the uncross-hatched part has been removed.
It's gone too, yes.
So I'm getting different. He said it exists up to two feet.
So the, it's, it's gone to the ballard.
Two to three feet from the ballard.
Yep.
Okay, so the, 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 this is unfortunate from my point of view because I feel like what we're looking at has a lot of details that aren't really, that are kind of extraneous to our, my task here tonight, which is to decide whether what they've built ought to be approved as a modification of the site plan. And what we have here is not what they've approved, what they've built or what they're asking to be approved.
Right. I think that we, they gotta do a plan review for themselves and come in with a new plan showing exactly what exists at this time.
And then ask for our approval of that and then we'll know what we're dealing with. Yeah.
You got that, guys?
I agree with you. I do believe we need to create what would be a kid silled, considered an as-built for the conditions that is built out on the site today to be able to come back out with better plans in regards to what's there. The one comment is, is we did have some issues in regards to coordination with the civil engineer. So we, we did have a lot of details that just weren't captured 100% correctly on there. But we did the best we can to capture all of them, and this seems to be the last floater that's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, we need the as-bills.
Okay, the question I have for you then is, what would be the next steps or process after we receive those as-bills and, and submit them back in through Ms. Brook Healy?
It would be another meeting, our next meeting with the same agenda item as a minor site plan review.
Okay. Is there any, is there anybody on the board that does not think what we had done on the site is an improvement and would like to see the median returned? Okay, can we, is there any reasoning that we can talk about at this point to kind of give you an insight as to our feelings in regards to it, why we believe it is safer?
Go ahead. Yeah, this is Conrad Decker. He's and he, he has some history with the property, so he, he knows why the median was put there and all that.
Want to give the history, Conrad, before?
Just by way of history, I used to own a bunch of properties behind your, your property there. I own 17 Park Street, I own 33 Park Street. I owned it since the early 1980s. I don't, I have no standing in there now, but, so I have a lot of history with what's been going on there for it used to be at, where you are now, it used to be at Arco Station. It was a Cumberland Farms that burned down. There was a Dunkin Donuts that was in there. There was a, a hair salon that was in there. There was a Trusco bank that went in there. Now you guys are in there, so I'm here, so. Since my ownership of that thing, it's been, you know.
Hello, the latest person that just entered, you're just a phone number.
Yeah.
Basically, you know, I've got some history down there. My engineering office used to be down there for 34 years. They used to come in and out of this driveway two, three times a day for 34 years, so I'm very intimate with it. Again, I have no standing in here now because I don't own the properties. But just by way of history, Trusco came in for a special permit in 2006. Their special permit was for the bank use as well as a drive-through from what was a hair salon before that. So site plan approval and special permit granted in 2006. They were proposing similar to what you guys are proposing, wide-open on that whole left side. You have to know that there's a, that Westerly driveway is a common driveway. Ingress and egress and regress, as you mentioned, that's the legal term on the right-of-way that we had. You got the Walgreens, you got the dental office, you've got the laundromat, you've got a pizza place. You have you guys coming in from one side. You got the other bank, Adams Bank, who's got an egress feature coming out into this common driveway. All the traffic comes into the 51 Park. They come in through this way or they go through their own driveway, but all egress traffic for comes out to this driveway as well. So there's a lot of activity out of this one common driveway.
Not all of the, there's another driveway. I mean, it's not that every single car that comes from the, the back shops go out this driveway.
There's a second driveway on the other side.
Right. Everybody on the 33 Park side comes out this driveway predominantly. Everybody that comes out of the A2 come over this way.
Or straight across and, and exit by the gas station, which is much wider and, yeah.
And it's also chaotic because the ingress goes on.
All of, all chaotic, yes.
Yeah, that gas station ingress, egress looks like it's three or four lanes wide.
A mess.
Yep.
And everybody recognized it's always been a problem. So basically, when Trusco came in here originally for the special permit, the way the building was set up, usually you have the you have your ingress and your drive-through egress would all go out on their own property, sit out onto the street. That's not the case here. When Trusco came in and they were going to have the, the traffic go all over the place like you've got here, you're showing here now. Right now you've got a, an 88-foot, if I scale on this, right, it's 88 feet wide from the sidewalk in the front all the way back to where the southerly is 88 feet wide. Anybody comes around the back of your building, be it your traffic or 51 Park traffic, when you guys are closed, as you know, they use your parking lot. Now, the traffic comes around that counterclockwise around your drive-through unrestricted across that 88-foot opening. They come out, they don't come out and go perpendicular to the common driveway. They come out at an angle diagonal out into the approach. And when you come out diagonal out of a, an approach like that, you're not looking 90 to your right or left. You're looking traffic is coming from that direction. That berm was put in there originally. I'm just trying to give you some history here. The reason for that, drive-through traffic egresses away from your window. They come up to the driveway. They can run perpendicular. They can see what's coming from the right. They can see what's coming from the left. And they can maneuver out safely. If you're coming out in a diagonal, the way you've got it shown right now, you come out at a diagonal, they can go wherever they want. And it's just, it's unrestricted. Walgreens owner, Gordon Development, me as a prior owner of 33, the folks over at 51 Park, we all agreed that this berm is going to direct traffic for the Trusco and now you. So that traffic comes out and it's not, it's not an 88-foot driveway. I mean, this planning board, this town DPW, mass DOT would never allow an 88-foot egress for a driveway, never. DOT requires 24-foot wide throat. Maybe they'll go 30 foot on the throat. You never get an 88-foot driveway throat where anybody can just come and go as they please. It just, it's, it's bad traffic management. So that would be that issue there.
Except that that's exactly what we've got over by the snowboard, right?
Yeah.
Oh, right, right.
I really think, I think, I, I think this was an error, Conrad. I, I think it made it worse. Because you have people going out at an angle exactly right in the traffic, like right where people are coming in off that road.
Which is even worse. It's been there 17 years without any incident. The other thing is when you got that berm there.
Also on that, it, it just was.
It's, it's bad. It shouldn't have, the drive-through shouldn't have been allowed to start with, but it, it is what it is.
Yeah, but I think having it open just makes it easier to get around because the other side's all open.
If you are a pedestrian on Park Street.
No pedestrian there.
People walk down that all the, all the time.
This sidewalk on Park Street, not down through here.
They do all the time.
Got it a million times.
Then, but there's no sidewalk.
Exactly.
Even with the berm, there's still not a sidewalk. And he's born now.
But it protects the, it protects the pedestrians who are coming out from that direction.
Okay, go ahead.
I can see that this is a contentious topic. I feel like I'm picking the scab off an old wound. I apologize.
Pretty much.
I just want to get a couple of clarifications and kind of speak our piece a little bit as to why we do think it is safer. Just to clarify, 51 Park Street's a tavern, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. We had noticed when we were investigating very early on, before we'd done any renovation, before we did anything and we were just in the, in the midst of helping our client purchase the property, we had noticed that 51 Tavern was using our parking area or our client's future parking area as parking, overflow parking, because it's just so convenient. It's right there next door. But the parking area that we had was severely damaged and their gravel parking area was actually bleeding onto our future client site by about two to three feet over the property line. So through the construction, we worked very closely with the tavern to make sure that we had drawn what the line is and then make sure that we do the fence and we gave them their, their parking signage back. And we also put signage on our property that it isn't to be anything but the Greylock building parking. So there should not be any additional parking by the tavern customers on Greylock's property. Obviously, some people might still do that, but there shouldn't be any expectation to do that. I do completely agree with you that the way that the, the exit of the drive-through and the way that angle did get the car more of a perpendicular direction to the right-of-way, I completely agree. But I don't like where it put the cars exiting the drive-through in relation to traffic heading east and west on Park Street. There was a number of things that was obstructing visibility to vehicles that were exiting the drive area. There was overgrown shrubs, trees. There was a dead-standing street tree, lamp post, wayfinding signage on the site and site signage as well. We did everything we could to kind of clear most of that out so the visibility was, was so that any car exiting was very visible. But we thought that anybody that was heading eastbound on Park Street and wanted to make a right-hand turn into the shopping plaza onto that right-of-way, and maybe they were doing a little bit more than the speed limit, they wouldn't have much time to react if somebody was coming out of the exit at that location. Because the distance from the edge of Park Street to where that was exiting was about eight feet. It's the width of the sidewalk and that grassy area between the sidewalk and Park Street. We felt if we opened it up wider and gave the opportunity to exit earlier, they would have a better line of sight from the folks that are driving on east and west on Park Street and that the members of the credit union would be able to exit safely without having that constriction. When you're facing that way perpendicular and you've got eight feet between you and Park Street and somebody's coming up your backside to make a right and you're trying to exit out, whether you're going left or right on that, there's not a lot of time. Now, I know you said 17 years of no incident, but there has to be a number of at least small minor fender benders that did cause damage to, you know, the, the customers of Trusco and maybe even Dunkin Donuts at the time. Maybe the site wasn't set up in a way to have a drive-through, but the condition does exist and we are trying to work to make it a better situation. So this wasn't something that we did carelessly. It was something that we did take thought and time into to try to create a better condition. But we're all ears to try to figure out how to make it a better situation and to get this recorded correctly so that we don't look like we're trying to cut corners, pun intended.
Is there a possibility to create an egress point at the back of your property line? You have 150-foot of depth along that, along that property line. Between, there's, there's a couple of ballards there. It looks, looks like maybe 14 feet wide between the ballards. Can you get an egress point, again, so traffic comes out perpendicular? They go wrap around the back of your building and it comes out perpendicular to hit the driveway? And then they can go left, right and safely look at the visibility either way.
Yeah. We, we would have to look at that, but there is a number of ballards, utility poles. There is a, a manhole, I believe, for the sanitary sewer in that location. And we would also have to pay particular attention to the grades to make sure that cars can get through there safely.
An egress movement, that's not an ingress movement.
Yeah, but the, the concern that I have then is that we would be looking to try to get approval on putting a curb cut into an area where we, our property doesn't have a guaranteed easement.
Sure you do. You've got the same rights of ingress, egress and regress that I had along that common driveway.
That it's restricted. If you look at any of the site plans, C1 or C2, you can see that there is a diagonal line that comes into the property and it's right where we were showing the radius of the concrete berm, the intended location of the radius of the concrete berm. We were only opening up what was the deeded easement for the property. We were not trying to open up any sort of curb outside of that easement area.
Mike, did you have a comment?
Well, I was going to say, first of all, I live across the street and it's beautiful. It's beauty, what you've done, it's beautiful. And I love the fence you put in. Lovely. However, I walk over there quite a bit and the first time I walked over there, I wasn't really noticing that the berm was gone. From that corner, which there's no accountability for the way people drive. And I was, I sort of jumped over a little because the berm is usually there and it, it has to me, it was somewhat of a barrier. Now, are you going to be exiting where all that blacktop is? Is that how that is? You're, you go around the building and you can just go right over where it used to be and it's like a little bump like in it? That's how they're going to be exiting? Not totally, but some up there, yeah. I'm, I'm somewhat concerned, I am concerned about safety. And in the summertime, I'll just use this as an example, the camps around here, they all come into town on their day off, the young people. And they walk down that area quite a bit. And it's I'm concerned about the safety. That's my main concern. And you've done a beautiful job on the building. The front of the building is spectacular. I can't say enough for it. And looking at, I was told they only hire people that do over banks to do this particular bank. I don't know if that's true or not, but.
It's, it's, it's true. The rumors are true.
I don't know, you know, it's winter time now, how you put it back in or, just, I don't know. I, I really don't know, but the safety to me is a real concern.
I do, I do see your concern and I completely understand. I can see how that would have been used as a sidewalk to get from Park Street into the shopping plaza. And there is no sidewalk access from Park Street to the shopping plaza. That was never intended to be a sidewalk. It just happened to be the safest place that you could make that transition. Matter of fact, I have been to the site no less than four times. And almost each time I'm there, somebody cuts across the property. They don't even go in front of the, of Greylock's new building. They go from the corner where the tavern is, come right across the parking They go from the corner where the tavern is, come right across the parking area, and they go right over top of that sanitary man, sanitary manhole into the plaza back there. They don't go the other way around. Now, I understand you live across the street, so you've got that crosswalk right in front of the bank to come across into, but I, I do understand that. It's, it's almost a situation where the neighboring properties there, you know, Adams Community there, the Sunoco further down, didn't take any opportunity to put any sort of pedestrian sidewalks or clear paths of travel from Park Street into the, the shopping plaza. It, it's a bit unfortunate, but it's not, it's not something that can't be overcome at this point. We've got that large exit over by Sunoco that they should be able to take five feet and be able to put, you know, an accessible sidewalk in.
Well, I, I also feel I hope there are no accidents. I mean, people coming down the area and somebody exiting. I hope there are no accidents. That's all. Those are my concerns. I mean, there's accidents everywhere.
This berm, I can't, I mean, as the traffic comes around the bank, they're going to be going pretty slow. If some, if there's, if we're a pedestrian problem, it's going to be generated down in the big parking lot when they come up and try to go from, use the two lanes that are now to exit. I mean, one's supposed to be entry, right-hand side is exit. They're the ones that's going to have the speed going around the bank. They're going to be creeping because they're, they either come from a window onto that section. I don't see where the berm's going to slow anybody down.
Well, there are a number of people, though, that walk from Walgreens.
I understand that, but how do we slow the, the cars coming out of the parking lot?
I don't know how you can slow the cars, period, because the way they drive on there, they're off the turnpike. They think they're still on the turnpike. They drive through to the area. I mean, which is a whole other issue. I'm concerned now about people walking. A lot of people do walk from Walgreens up that area to the crosswalk or just continue on up West Park Street. I've seen many people from the laundromat carrying, like, the, the carts or whatever up that area.
There's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk anywhere. There wasn't, there never will be.
I know that, but they're doing it. The berm.
But it actually made it narrower. Where you're, so they're trying to walk through there, and you have two lanes of traffic going in and out by Walgreens. Oh, yes, sir.
Sorry, I don't, I don't want to be rude and interrupt. Adams Community Bank, I was just looking at it. They actually do have a sidewalk that connects at Park Street, comes right past their front door, across their drive-up services, which is two lanes, and then across a small little parking median and into the parking lot for the shopping plaza. But that discharges the pedestrian into the middle of while parking lanes. There's, there's no other additional sidewalk connecting to the shopping plaza itself. That's the best sidewalk condition that exists today, and actually would be the safest one to navigate as a pedestrian getting into the shopping plaza. And there is, there is traffic speed mitigation devices that are out there. There's aftermarket speed bumps that can just be rebar pounded into the asphalt to slow down traffic. There's, you know, you could pull up all the asphalt and put down cobblestones. People don't drive fast on cobblestones. They feel like their car's going to shake to pieces. I, I just think that there is things that can be done. Greylock has obviously stepped up and done a lot to improve the property and the appearance, and we are so thankful for the, you know, for the, the, the kind words that you've shared in regards to the improvements that have been done. And we are going to go back and do some additional work in regards to the drawings to, to make it what it is today. But is, is there anything that you could see that we could do that could make it better? Because I don't think the original condition is good or was good. And I don't, and if you don't think the condition we have is good, then there has to be some sort of happy medium or middle ground.
Can I just take a minute to catch up? I think a lot of you are farther along on this than I am. So I'm looking at your plan. I'm looking at the large format version of it. And the building has got two bump outs on what looks to be, let's call it the east side. And are those both windows? Are those both drive-up windows? What, what are they?
The, the initial one is a night depository. So that's just for businesses and personnel or persons that would like to deposit money after hours and leave it there, and then the credit union employees take it and deposit it into their accounts. The second window is the drive-up window, sir.
Thank you. All right. So that, when the car is stopped to do its transaction at the drive-up window, is it what, maybe thirty, forty feet from the sidewalk?
Ooh, let me look at the plan.
I mean, there's, there's eighteen, eighteen, nineteen feet on the building in front, and then another fifteen feet or so of, of, of grass out front and, and shrubs. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be exact. I'm just trying to, my question really is, what is it that you expect drivers to do when they finish the transaction? Where do you expect them to drive?
They will obviously cut their wheels to the right and then try to safely navigate onto the right-of-way. That, that would be the expectation.
What angle do you expect them to achieve when they merge with the right-of-way? Is it going to be a forty-five degree cut, or it won't be a ninety-degree cut? There's no room to get ninety degrees around, just there.
I, I'm not certain they were able to get a ninety-degree cut with the condition they have. And looking at the condition of the existing berm as far as it did extend and the rounded radius portion of it, that's where it had the most damage, I believe, from vehicles, the right rear tire hitting it, and then probably also damaging the customer's tires.
Okay, okay. So what, do you have an opinion, Mr. Conklin, about what would make it safer for the exiting customer from that window to sort of merge into the flow of traffic that might or might not be coming from either direction in that driveway? Is it, is it getting closer to a ninety-degree angle entry? Would that be safer? Is there anything that, that can be done at all that makes it more likely that people have better sight distance or better reaction times or are more cautious or move more slowly, anything at all?
The only thing that I can think of was to put some sort of a a speed reduction device or a speed hub close to Park Street so that traffic turning from Park onto the right-of-way slowed down. That's the only thing that I can think of. The vehicles that are exiting the credit union onto the right-of-way. I mean, even with the exist, the previous condition that was there, there was no way to get the vehicle completely ninety degrees.
That's a different question.
I'd have to think very hard on that one, but I, I can't off the top of my head think of something that would be a, you know, a suitable answer at the moment, and I apologize.
Hey, no, no, that's fine. Thank you. Think it over. Is it, in your opinion, more risky now without the, the berm than it was before with the berm?
No, we believe it's actually safer now.
Because? Why?
Because instead of exiting all the way down at the end of the drive, the drive-through where the exit was initially, where the person in the vehicle that's exiting is turning onto the right-of-way, meanwhile, people were coming down Park Street heading eastbound with all the visual obstructions that were there, and the driver of the exiting vehicle, the oncoming traffic is coming from their blind side. They can't see if somebody wants to turn in real quick.
Hey, that's not changing anything. That's not changing.
It's giving them, at the last drive-up lane at the window, it's probably giving them at least an additional ten feet to turn right prior to what the existing condition was.
How is that possible? Once you clear the drive-through window, start negotiating the, the right turn.
Yep, and, and you aren't going to have to go through that last ten feet of curb or even wonder where it is because it's on your right side.
The front of your car is pretty much even with the berm where it was.
Along his car.
Uh, sir, if, if you look at C two, you'll see at the drive-up that there is a magenta-colored rectangle with an X, also magenta-colored in it, that calls out for new concrete drive-up pavement. The leading edge of that box closest to Park Street is where the front of the vehicles would be. And the reason why we do concrete is from the heat of the engines, heating up asphalt, it basically melts it, and then it becomes, you know, cattywampus, for lack of a better word. Concrete obviously holds up better with heat, so that's why we do that in that, in that condition. So from that position, if they were able to cut the wheels tight at that point to the right-hand side, their back wheel would actually probably hit, or the back right wheel would probably hit that berm if it was still there today at the front edge of that window where it says three point one, if you were to trace that straight across. I wish I could share my screen, but I do understand. I hope I am verbally communicating what it is that you're asking.
The way it's existed for the last seventeen years, I mean, it's, it has worked.
Dan, do you have something? Do you want to add to it? And I think we're going to move on until we get more.
Well, I, I just think it's great that we have had the, the discussion that we've had, because they are now aware of what the concerns are, of which board members are concerned and why. And I think it sounds like they're going to go and, you're going to go and consider the, the concerns that we've expressed, and you'll file a, an as-built, or you'll file a plan that has some further modifications as you decide, right?
Yes.
Yeah. This, this is Carl, and sorry to interject. If you weren't asking me, my computer died, so I'm just on the phone. But that, that is what I understand. We'll come back to you. I, I can work with Brooke on the next board meeting that you guys have. We can come back with a little more research, but even no matter what's decided, we'll make it right, you know, by Greylock and by the town of Lee, so I don't want you to worry about that whatsoever.
And I, I guess we're going to need an accurate plan of what is out there now. Any options?
Yeah.
And tell us, tell us why. If you, if you think it's better, you're going to really have to sell us why it's better. Okay?
Yep.
But he has.
Understood.
You cannot go away with the assumption that the board has decided this case either way.
Either way, not at all.
No.
We're still open-minded on this.
Very open-minded.
Gordon?
Want it to be safe, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just before they all take off, I think there's a representative from the bank there. Just wanted to give them a heads up. They have a huge sign out front that says now open. That needed a permit from the Board of Selectmen for temporary signage for special events. So they should be applying for that permit so that we can also look at time duration and how it's attached and whatnot. So the bank should take notice and apply for that temporary permit from the Board of Selectmen, and that's all. I'm, I'm not trying to voice in on anything you guys are doing, but I needed the bank to know that that sign is not lawful at the moment. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Gordon. This is Jody Briggs from Greylock Federal. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'm sorry if we missed that. I will get right in touch with my facilities people. And I just do want to extend my gratitude to this, to this board for taking as much time as you did with us tonight. We are thrilled to be able to open that facility, to be able to better serve our residents and our community, and, and thanks again. E W Campbell will do their best to make sure that this is the right thing for the town and for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, yes, one more, Mr. Conklin.
It's just one last item, and I, it's, it's me basically asking a big favor of the board. Would you mind taking some time out of your life? And I know you guys, you know, you're here, you're taking your time to do this, but just to drive around the bank, do it a couple of times. See if it feels like it's easier to navigate for yourself. By, so that the next time we meet, you can have a, you know, like, hey, I did try it, it's worse, or I did try it, it's better. I just think that, in my opinion, I think you driving around her, you feel it's a little bit better. That's all.
Thank you.
Oh, Dan?
And I'm going to leave you with this. So next time when you come, one of the questions I'm going to ask is risk transfer and snow plowing, and what happens when one of our local citizens here has some headphones on and is walking to Walgreens in the middle of a snowstorm, and you got someone over there plowing, and he's walking down that berm, how is he going to be safe, or how is she going to be safe? Those are the questions I'm going to ask next time you come around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a few. What's the next date, Brooke? February twelfth.
It's a big night.
Okay.
Is there a date we need to have the as-built civil drawings in to be able to make that meeting?
The Friday before, yes.
Friday before. Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much. See you then.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else at meeting, Brooke? Do we have on the agenda yet?
That's the deck, the stairs.
Oh, yes, yes, those guys. Center Street, yeah. Okay.
What about the marijuana by law?
Well, they, they were moving on to that. So I don't know if anybody, I went to the select boards meeting, and they are requesting that we, well, it's, since they requested, by law, we are, we need to address this and have a public hearing, I guess. And what they want to do, what they are requesting is, it's in our packet, right?
I want to reduce the number.
Reduce the number of non-retail. To three, which is what we have right now in town. Yeah, the last page. So move it, it would change from fourteen to three. And if you did, you saw the meeting or read the articles about it, my thoughts on it is there's, besides retail, there, I believe there's seven different licenses that are available. Labs, testing, and the problematic ones are cultivation and manufacturing, which create the odor. The select board feels that since we've lost the community host agreement, that there's really no no reason to partake in any business with these businesses anymore. I believe that pretty accurate.
Since we have to question before us tonight is when?
When, that's fine.
But I, I do think it would be very useful when the public hearing happens, if we could have someone, Gordon Bailey or otherwise, come and talk to us and explain the history of what the town's expectations were originally when this bylaw passed. I was not a member of this board then. What you were thinking when you enacted it with those members, what happened. I know that the newspaper made a reference to changed rules by the marijuana board.
They, they changed.
I'd like to hear what those are. You know, I may be to ask you, but I think when we have the public hearing, somebody should make a presentation about why the circumstances have changed. And I think that from what I gather, at least two things have changed. One is the amount of revenue to the town. I don't know why, and, or the amount, and the other one is the experience with one growth facility or maybe others, I don't know. But maybe we've learned something about the offensiveness of the smell to the neighbors, and so I hope that when we get to the public hearing, somebody's going to present that case to us.
Go ahead, Peg.
No, I was going to say, I caught the end of the meeting, Buck.
Oh, yeah. We'll get you, Gordon.
I think when we did it. I think when we did it, just for history, Peter, or anybody, we were hoping to get as someone, you know, some of the mills to maybe have a whole complex of the other things that now they're changing. The other thing is, from what I've gotten from the state, the marijuana laws were this new addition came sort of out of the blue. It was uh not a great deal of publicity or public hearings or anything about it, um Gordon probably knows more than I do on it, but one thing I got, it just said everything has changed now. And there wasn't a great deal of publicity um about it for people to put in input, so. I mean, it's it's very confusing uh the way they change it so quickly and then everything has to change in the towns.
They said that that you're no longer to allowed to do a host agreement.
Right, you're not allowed to do a host.
One way to look at it is, it was basically extortion. We said, if you want to do business in the town, you're gonna have to give us this extra thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to do business. Above your tax dollars, above the three percent of what the business is, to do business.
But the other part of that.
So they said that's not allowed anymore.
Sorry.
So.
No, so the other part of that is, so every town did have a vote and the town itself, say Lee, I think Lee voted to have it, was it fifty, it was
I don't remember the numbers.
I forget, but it was maybe fifty-three, fifty-four percent. And then if you have that percentage, anybody could come into town and put it, say, up on Teresa Terrace.
Well, no, no, because we wrote bylaws about that.
We did, but
Yeah.
They still felt that that was one of the reasons why towns that voted for and some of these particular rules.
Yes, uh, sorry, I hope I didn't interrupt you, Peg.
You're good, I we're, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, uh, I I obviously am the one who brought this up. Um, as a reaction to the manufacturing down on Route one oh two and the bad odors, and I didn't want to see this happen in any other community, any other section of our community. Um, but as um if the board did not witness the board, the select board meeting the other night, and Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that it was clear that um while the Board of Selectmen asked you folks to have a hearing, one concept was you could talk about this, you have time to at your next meeting to review the different businesses that might need a license. And also get back to us and say, gee, what if you amend your request to ask us to have a hearing uh and allow this, this, and this in addition to just those three? Um, and then the board could always write you back and say, sure, amend your hearing to say this, this, or this. Um, the problem was I actually sat through a an MMA um presentation on the changes to the Cannabis Commission regulations. Um, all I can say is it's it's a huge bait and switch issue from when our town meeting voted on this issue. Uh, I voted in favor of the fourteen without a doubt. Absolutely, I voted in favor for it, and I I suggested that anybody else also vote for it. The problem is that the Cannabis Commission, on their own, without really any input from anybody else, they changed all the rules. And while we do get a three percent uh tax uh sent back to us on their sales, uh retail sales and whatnot, um, the changes at the Cannabis Commission have basically removed the ability of a host town to have a host agreement that allowed us to get additional funds to offset any perceived impacts that that particular business may bring. And I know Chairman Donovan was uh very clear that there are certainly some of the permits um that we have the ability to issue um don't really impact smell or or anything else, like if they're just trucking marijuana from one place to another, I I get that. And I think that was a a point well taken. And so I would hope that the board would look at the different kinds of permits that are issued and see if you'd like to get back to the Board of Selectmen to suggest, gee, maybe we should allow these, these, and these, but not those, those, and those that might impact odor and um uh traffic and other issues um that might come along with those. Uh, I I don't know if that's clear enough, but um I think, you know, I certainly have reacted to the odor issues that we're dealing with and the total lack of for over a year, I'd say, right now supposedly they're working on this, but for over a year, we dealt with this with absolutely no response from that company. Um, they absolutely appeared to not give a damn about odor mitigation. So now that seems to have changed because we um as a board have said, okay, for the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year, the thirty-seven thousand dollars you should have paid us as an impact fee based on an existing host agreement, we're gonna let you take that money and try and mitigate the odor because that's that's the impact you have on our neighborhood. That's the impact that we hope you will mitigate. Um, and then after that, it's kind of reduced because we're still kind of dealing with the impact that we might have in our schools. And um uh Cannabis Provisions has been very, very cooperative in providing funds toward a resource officer to be able to um discuss issues and interact with the students up there, it's been very, a very good program. Um, but now we're getting faded out of that. So we are transferring the amount of funds we need for that resource officer to our regular taxation money. And I guess um I wouldn't use the word extortion, but I understand the concept that Chairman Donovan mentioned. Where, you know, and so I can understand some of the issues around the Cannabis Commission changing the rules, but they didn't really get good input from any of the communities. They kind of just did this on their own. And um anyway, so I I would, as a Board of Selectman member, I would just say, an individual member, I would not be opposed to hearing back from the planning board about some suggested changes um that might be different than what we are requesting you to do. So that the board could discuss it and maybe amend our uh suggestion to you to limit it to only three, but be very specific about um some of the permits that appear not to impact our neighborhoods in any negative way. So with that, I'll be quiet and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gordon.
I got a question for.
Okay, hold on, Gordon.
Gordon, uh, is it with this one facility, this growth facility, do we have a problem with enforcement? Because I can remember when all these permits came out, we always stipulated uh the need to control the smell. And everybody that stepped up to the plate said they would do that. Uh, we have we enforce any of this?
Well, uh, Mr. Forrest, I I understand your question. And I would ha- I have had trouble getting the actual language of the special permits. And I, what I know of it was there was never a condition that was not appealed that said, gee, if there's X amount of complaints about odor, then you're out of business. So I think there was a a general statement and a recognition that, sure, we're not gonna, you know, have a problem, but there was never any enforceable condition. That's why it's so important for any special permit granting board, there's three special permit granting boards in town. It's so important for people to place their concerns on a a condition because once it's a uh registered condition, now we have enforcement. But if it's just a handshake and a nod and a wink, then no, that's not enforceable. And I think that's kind of where we are with that section, sir, as I understand it.
So, uh, a explicit environmental part of our bylaw doesn't hold up?
I think if you look up the terminology for what an obnoxious or noxious smell is, I'm not sure that it meets it, but also the Cannabis Commission, again, bait and switch, said, oh, by the way, odor is not something that we're gonna be concerned about.
First, can you, can you get me that verbiage anywhere?
I will try to get that to you, sure, because I I sat with Chris Britton, our town administrator, and sat through the MMA um presentation, and I was kind of really surprised that the Cannabis Commission decided, oh, well, odor's not an issue, don't worry about it in your neighborhoods. It's like, what? That's one of the biggest, especially outdoor, open uh growing. And that's one thing um that I wanted to make sure that we never allowed in this town.
Good question.
Go ahead.
So Gordon, in section twelve point six of our zoning, the title is toxious, toxic or noxious matters, semicolon, odors.
Yep.
There shall be no emissions of toxic or noxious matter or objectionable odors of any kind in such quantity as to be readily detectable at the property line of the lot on which the use emitting the toxic or noxious material or odor is located. And then it goes on to give a definition of toxic or noxious matter. We tried to use, I mean, I understand that you're disappointed in what the Marijuana Commission has done, but don't have a separate and completely independent enforcement agency here in the town to enforce our zoning bylaws?
Uh, we do. Uh, uh, first of all, I don't believe that toxic, it would be a toxic. Um, if you look up the term toxic, I don't think that would be an issue. Obnoxious maybe, or noxious maybe a little bit too generic, but I'm more than, I'm more, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Gordon, it said toxic or noxious matter or objectionable odors of any kind.
Sure, I get that. Um, you know, there, we certainly could try and get the uh the zoning enforcement officer to write a letter about that. In the meantime, we're trying to do it through the host agreement. Um, however, I think that would be pretty tough to do because the Cannabis Commission has taken over all that. And they specifically have, because it's a state regulation, it supersedes our zoning bylaw. And if they've come up with a determination.
How's that? It supersedes our zoning bylaw, explain that, please.
It's it's possible, yes, well, again, it's a higher, you know, as an attorney, it's a hierarchy of laws and regulations.
Yeah, I know, I know that some things are, some things are superseded, but some things aren't.
I agree, I agree. So my understanding is that the Cannabis Commission saying and putting out regulations that say odor is not going to be something that you can regulate by a host agreement or whatnot. I'm more than happy to look into it more, Peter, while you guys are deciding how you should deal with this. Um, I think I'll work with this.
So, so Gordon.
Did you, did you, I I hadn't finished, but I thought Peter wanted to say something again.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just muttering here, I'm I having you look into it further would be perfect, Gordon, thank you.
Yeah, I I I would look into it with the zoning enforcement officer. Um, but my understanding is that the Cannabis Commission has taken over all this kind of issue based on the host agreement section. I know that under our zoning bylaw, it very specifically, and under forty A section three of the general law, it says specifically that cannabis um is not to be considered agricultural for purposes of zoning. So we uh, so we can't worry about the whole right to farm by law and all that stuff. So Highland can still spread their manure, uh, the, you know, they can all do all that, even though maybe people don't like to smell it, but it's covered under the agricultural, you know.
This is not covered by section three, this is, we're still in business here as far as we know so far with our zoning enforcement, right?
Yes.
And also, not agriculture.
In E seven.
In E seven of our marijuana bylaw, we have control of emissions. Sufficient measures and means of preventing smoke, odors, debris, dust, fluids, and other substances from exiting an ME must be provided at all times. In the event that any odor, yada, yada, um substances exit an ME, the owner of the subject premises and the license shall be jointly and severely liable of such condition, severally liable of such conditions and shall be responsible for immediate full cleanup and correction of such conditions.
More than happy to discuss this with the enforcement agent and maybe a call to the Cannabis Commission to try and figure out, well, who is the wha- what is the mechanism here? Because they went for a year basically thumbing their noses at us, not doing a damn thing. And uh, I would get the calls from all the neighbors. Not, you know, we tried to give them the number also, the neighbors, so that they could complain, and many of them did. But, you know, people driving through town from Beckett have told me, oh my God, it's horrible when I drive by Route one oh two. And we would convey that message, but they just seemed to be totally non-responsive for a while. Now, right now, there's, they're saying that they're gonna be responsive, so I'm waiting to see. You know, hopefully, hopefully, they're gonna do what they said they're gonna do, and we don't have to do a zoning enforcement action. But I I'll talk to the zoning enforcement officer about it, we'll try and figure it out. In town attorney.
Or I don't even know if if you say this, our bylaw has no teeth anymore, then let's uh throw it in the rubbish and done with it.
Well, that's what we hope, I hope to be able to look back on, but in the meantime, we have, as a board of Selectmen, we've asked you guys to consider having a hearing. And and um would love to hear back from you, love to hear back from you on businesses that don't impact our town negatively, that we don't have to worry about um a a host agreement where we get money to mitigate their impact. There could be several businesses that do not have an impact. I'm okay with that, to reconsider that, based on what the board thinks.
Okay. Dan, do you have something you were gonna say?
No, Gordon answered it, because I was gonna say.
Uh, Gordon, the only thing I I would add at the end of this thing is if we're gonna wrap up this part tonight, uh, I don't know if the zoning enforcement officer, uh, I would want to put him in this position. I mean, I I I think he's gonna need more, I know, he's got involved, but he needs more quote.
Than what?
Than walking down there and saying, I'm the building inspector.
He's got, he's got the right to issue a violation, three hundred dollar a day violation. Violation notice, he's got a right to take him to district court and get an injunction. What do you want to give him, you know, an M sixteen?
Oh, no.
Yeah, sure.
Put him, put somebody by his side in blue, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, he can do that, too.
Do we put like a a stop order on it, like they do?
Get that, I believe, I I think the state law is that you have the choice of two options for enforcement of zoning, one is the administrative route in which he can give a penalty notice of a notice of violation and after, I don't know what extra steps, waiting, noticing, something, possibly. The the penalty is, I think, two or three hundred dollars a day. And if you don't like that, then you can take the alternate route and you can go to district court, which maybe is land court now, I don't know, but it still says district court. And you can go to the court and you can say, judge, order this guy to stop doing this. Give me an injunction. Which is, an injunction is an order from a court to do something or not, to not do something.
Well, in Massachusetts, workers count, they they'll come out there and
Well.
They'll send the officer down, they'll put a stop work order on you and find you two.
Yeah.
Peter, we, I'm just, I don't remember this one, we even put at the end of all these of that section that said, any violation will be corrected within thirty days, if not corrected within the required time, all operations of the ME shall be suspended until the violation is corrected.
There you go. Down there, put the lock on the gate.
Yeah, well, I think talking with the enforcement people is your, is your force here.
We'll, we're, we'll be setting a special permit hearing and we'll continue discussing how we want the the um the hearing, the language.
Should we, should we pick a date?
Yep, I think so.
A special permit hearing? No.
No, no, it's not, it's a uh public hearing, sorry, public hearing, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Um, public hearing.
We've got, what, sixty-five days?
Says by.
A month out or so, so to give people a chance.
By March twenty-third. So let's do wanna do the first meeting in March?
If you want to wait that long, I don't know, Gordon, do you, do you think it makes sense for it to wait longer? To wait a long time or get get on to it?
Well, um, I I think it depends on whether you folks want to get back and ask the Board of Selectmen to amend our request. Well, I I think it depends on whether you folks want to get back and ask the Board of Selectmen to amend our request to not be quite so drastic down to three, but include, you know, an allowance for certain other businesses. That's one reason I was hoping that, and and the chairman concurred to have this on your, on your agenda. I think it's, you know, look at all the different licenses available and say, well, what are the potential impacts? And if there's three or four kinds of permits that don't have any major impacts, fine. You know, I think, I think that would be entertained by the board to say, sure, we'll adjust our language and ask you to look at it this way. You know, you can also make a recommendation after your hearing. We're just saying, have a hearing. And if the results of that hearings is a recommendation, you know, if you want to wait that long, just say, no. As because of our hearing, we think you should have this, this, and this, and this be allowed. I don't know, you'd have to check with town attorney and see if that would be okay to do short of asking the board to amend our request.
So I think, I think Gordon is right. If we go forward with the change in the bylaw, we should, I mean, what he's, what he's sort of saying, or what I'm hearing is they may have been a little overbroad in their request, and they'd like us to request them to narrow it. Okay, well, that'd be a nice thing to do, but I think the prior question is, why are we even here, Gordon? Why is it that this situation has existed for a year or whatever it is, and the town hasn't enforced the multiple bylaws that we seem to have that anticipate how to deal with this problem?
That's a great question. I don't have a direct answer at this moment, but I think a lot of it has to do with, it goes back to what you've already been dealing with, with enforcement and, and also knowing what is enforceable. Like, has anybody even read this section that's in the enforcement world? I'm not making, not making excuses, I'm just saying that that's something that we need to consider and look at. I'm more than happy to do that and discuss this with the board if you want to continue this item on your next agenda, just so that we can discuss publicly. I'm more than happy to get back to you in a couple of weeks or whenever your next meeting is.
Definitely get there, month out, and discuss it next meeting.
Well, when, just, let's, the timing, the timing is gonna be difficult. So our next meeting will be the 12th.
Okay.
When's the select board? Is that?
We're the first, we're the first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Okay, so we'll, we'll come back, we'll put this on the agenda for the 12th.
Okay.
And how about we set the public hearing for the 26th?
Sounds good.
That's good. I'm gonna be leaving for a while on March 1st, so I'd like to be here. 26th is good for me.
Perfect, sounds good.
That's great.
I'll check in with you on your meeting on the 12th, if that's okay with you folks.
Yep. Okay.
We'll have this ready for the May town meeting and so on, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but they were required to have this done by the 23rd of March, by their request.
It's a 65-day notice you need to have a hearing, but, but you can open the hearing and continue it. You just need to be able to give a recommendation on the day of the town meeting. So while you are required to open your hearing at a certain date, there's nothing that says you can't continue that hearing beyond the 65 days. It's all about playing the game.
Yep. Okay, so there's the, you're gonna get that posted for the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good old brother.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you, I'm gonna sign off.
Yep.
Thank you.
Wow, this was a long one, folks.
I know, the time is tight anyways.
Passed my bedtime.
It is mine, too.
Just about mine.
Move to it.
Move to it, so moved. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, sir.
Hi, all in favor?
Yes.